I'd like to call to order the August 4th regular meeting of the Bulwaring Board of Commissioners for 2015. Invite you to stand if you wish while Commissioner Paragon offers our invocation.
Please bow. Lord, please provide us, provide this entire Assembly of Leaders the necessary guidance, wisdom, and courage to make the best possible decisions for our community now and in their futures. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Now, I'd like to invite to the podium two members of Troop 705 from the Holy Spirit Catholic Church is where they meet. This is Ian Crabtree and Jacob Pettigo. They will be leading us in our pledge and invite them to do that at this time.
Will you all join us in pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Richard Sanders. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate you being here. I get to say this for the first time. Mrs. Ward, would you please call her on?
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Paragon?
Here.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Commissioner Dunning?
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Here.
Under our awards and recognition section, this might take me a minute. We've had thirteen retirements this month. I think it has something to do with the way that the retirement system calculates the retirement pay, but we want to recognize Master Police Officer Lisa Brown from the Police Department, also Administrative Services Supervisor Kim Clayton from Parks and Recreation, Paul Correa. I think he's been here the most, thirty-four years. John Ellis, Company Commander at the Fire Department. What's that fellow's name, guys? Greg Johnson from the Fire Department? I believe he's already in Alaska. Detective Mike Lemon with Police, Company Commander from Fire, Mark Page. Firefighter EMT Two is Mark Schultz. Police Captain Tyrell Sharber. Fire Apparatus Operator EMT JD Shuffett. Deputy Police Chief John Stewart. Company Commander, arson investigator Charlie Toms from Fire. And Police Sergeant Shane West. All those had about twenty years or better and some up to thirty-four years, so we congratulate them on their service to the city and thank them and I wish them well in their retirements. Any other awards or recognitions to be brought to the body? You have any comments, Mr.?
I do, Mayor. Thank you. There'll be a need for two late files with your courtesy, BG 21524 and BG 21525, both acted on last night, need a second reading tonight with your courtesy.
We need a motion to add those to the agenda?
So move.
Second. Motion by Hill, second by Dunning. Please call her on.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
And finally, it'll be in need for an executive session. Kate will read the reason.
Pursuant to KRS 618101C for discussions of pending litigation against or on behalf of the city.
So move.
Second. Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Any discussion? Please call her on.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Anything else, Mr. DeFebo?
No, Mayor.
All right. First item is approval of minutes from the special meeting on July 7th, 2015.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Dunning. Any discussion? Please call her on.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
In every regular meeting, we offer an opportunity for public comments. If there's someone in the audience that has an item to bring to our attention that's not on tonight's agenda, this would be the opportunity for them to come up and speak. Seeing no one step up, we will take these second readings of the two ordinances that we had added to the agenda. Ordinance BG 201524.
Ordinance related to budget amendment. Ordinance approving Amendment Number Five to the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky Annual Operating Budget for Fiscal Year 2015.
So move.
Second. Motion by Hill, second by Dunning. This is a second reading. We had an opportunity to talk about it last night. Is there any further comments or discussion? Please call her on.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
And BG 201525.
Ordinance approving interlocal cooperation agreement with Warren County and Warren County Downtown Economic Development Authority Incorporated. Ordinance approving interlocal cooperation agreement with Warren County and Warren County Downtown Economic Development Authority Incorporated related to the WKU gateway to downtown Bowling Green Development Area Tax Increment Financing District.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill and second by Paragon. Again, we had a thorough discussion and explanation last night and the Daily News was kind enough to put that in tonight's paper so that people know what we're doing. Is there any further comments or discussion about it? Please call her on.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Second reading of ordinance BG 201520.
Ordinance relating to Classification Pay Schedule. Ordinance amending the Classification Pay Schedule G for General Classified Employees of the City of Bowling Green for Fiscal Year 2016.
So move.
Second. Motion by Hill and second by Williams. Again, this is a second reading. I know it's been a month. Any other comments or questions about it? Please call her on.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
And now, what half the audience has been waiting for, because of all the retirements that I mentioned just a few moments ago, we're going to consider municipal order 2015-130.
Municipal order approving the promotions of Melanie S. Watts to the position of Deputy Police Chief, Brian E. Harold to the position of Assistant Police Chief, Joshua M. Hughes and Beldon T. Perry to the position of Police Captain, and Michael D. Myrick, Robert O. Perry, and Brandon N. Stice to the position of Police Sergeant in the Police Department.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Dunning and second by Hill. Mr. DeFebo.
All I have to say is I ask Chief Hawkins to come forward, put his promotions before you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, Mr. DeFebo, I appreciate you giving me the time to be here tonight to bring before you seven candidates for promotion in the Bowling Green Police Department as a result of, as the Mayor mentioned earlier, a number of retirements. In whole, let me say about all of these candidates, I am confident in their ability. I'm confident in their character. I think they have proven themselves in their previous positions. They're hard workers and I think they will all do a great job in the positions for which they are being recommended for promotion. If the Commission would endure me just a moment, I'll be as quick as I can be. I just want to highlight a few facts about each candidate as part of the recommendation. Melanie Watts, if you'll stand. Melanie was hired, she's being recommended for promotion to Lieutenant Colonel, which is a deputy chief. Hired in nineteen ninety-five, first promotion to Sergeant in two thousand and three, promotion to Captain in two thousand and seven, and then to Major in two thousand and thirteen. She has been assigned previously to the Drug Task Force. She's also served as a supervisor in our Investigations Division. Melanie has a BA from Western Kentucky University and a master's from Eastern Kentucky University. She's also a graduate from the Southern Police Institute. With her tonight are family members Johnny, Lexi, and Abby Watts, along with her mother, Priscilla Stutz. For recommendation for promotion to Major, which is an Assistant Chief, Captain Brian Harold comes to us by way of Litchfield, Kentucky. Hired originally in nineteen ninety-six, promoted to Sergeant in two thousand and seven and to Captain in two thousand and twelve. Brian has worn many, many hats, some of which include Detective, Patrol Sergeant, Detective Sergeant, and most recently Patrol Commander of our B Chef. He's a retired member of the United States Army Reserve of twenty-four years of service. Served in many roles there as well. Field medic, flight medic, Drill Sergeant, CID Special Agent. He served in Operation Desert Storm and Operation Iraqi Freedom and retired at the rank of Chief Warrant Officer Two, which I understand is pretty impressive. He has been one of our long-term hostage negotiators and has been successful at negotiating many critical situations over his career. Celebrating with him tonight are his wife, Michelle, his sons Keegan and Hayden, his mom, Athena McKinney, and her husband, Ron McKinney. Sergeant Beldon Perry being recommended for Captain. Hired July nineteenth, two thousand and four, promoted to Sergeant in two thousand and eleven. Served in the roles of Motor Officer in our Motor Unit, Police Training Officer, and most recently as a Sergeant in our Criminal Investigations Division. He has a bachelor's degree from Eastern Kentucky University in Criminal Justice. He's also a graduate of the Academy of Police Supervision. With him tonight, his wife, Deanna Perry, son, Jackson, daughter Natalie, and his mother, Teresa Woodall. Josh Hughes, Sergeant Josh Hughes being promoted, recommended for promotion to Captain. He, interesting note about Josh, he was a former member in nineteen ninety-seven of our Explore program, so it shows you the impact those programs have long-term in our organization. Hired originally in two thousand and one, promoted to Sergeant in two thousand and seven. Josh has a bachelor's degree in Public Administration from Eastern Kentucky University, a graduate of the Sergeant's Academy, the Criminal Justice Executive Development Program, and a Leadership Certification from WKU. His wife, Brandy, is here with him, along with his sons, David and Jacob, and his newest addition to his family is daughter, Abigail. Officer Robert Perry being recommended for promotion to Sergeant comes to us by way of Louisville. His original hire was in two thousand and six. He served in a number of roles. He helped on the team that redesigned our cruisers that you see driving around Bowling Green today. He is a police training officer, which is a common theme among folks who get promoted. He's also served in the capacity of Acting Sergeant on a couple of occasions, has done well in that role. He has an Associate's Degree in Criminal Justice. He also has a Leadership Certification Certificate from Western Kentucky University. His wife, Rachel, and his daughter, Avery, are both here with him tonight. Detective Michael Myrick, he was hired in two thousand and five. He has served long-term on our Critical Response Team. He has also been a member of our Criminal Investigations Division for about five years at this point. He has a Bachelor's Degree in Criminal Justice from Kentucky Wesleyan. One interesting thing to note, he's a four-year Letterman in baseball for Kentucky Wesleyan, so he's our resident athlete. He, his wife, Lauren, is with him tonight, along with other family members, Randall and Kristy Myrick. And last but not least, Brandon Stice is being recommended for promotion to Sergeant. Brandon is a hometown boy, but actually served as a police officer in the city of Murray for a couple of years before coming to Bowling Green. We hired him in two thousand and eight. He is also a police training officer, an Explorer Advisor, and currently serves on our two thousand and fifteen Employee Committee as the Chairperson. He attended Murray State University. He is currently serving in an Acting Sergeant's role and doing extremely well in that role. With him tonight to help celebrate, his mother, Vicki, his father, Roger. He also has a son, an eight-year-old son, Mason. And of note, he's got a brother that also works for the city, Jordan Stice, who's with Public Works. I would ask that you accept my recommendation for promotion for all these candidates and approved by way of both. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Any comments or discussion? Yes, sir.
Chief, I know in promoting all these individuals, you ran a thorough check and their backgrounds speaks a lot for them. There's one. Did we run enough checks on Ms. Watts?
Joe, I heard her.
Did you?
I did.
Okay, Mayor. The word.
Self-explanatory words.
Mayor says, "All right." That's what I mean.
I'm sorry. I did two of you, didn't I? Did Brian too? And then I left. I knew it was over. I couldn't do any better than that, so congratulations to all of you.
Mayor, one other thing.
Yes, sir.
All jokes aside, I think the Bowling Green Police Department probably is the best educated police department anywhere in the country, and certainly in the state of Kentucky. And having been in one of the positions here years ago, I admire what the Chief has done in promoting the people to where they should be. It makes a great police department and everyone in the city of Bowling Green should be proud of what we have.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. And I'm not sure. And this comment is not just for police, but for that next item coming up on the agenda. This is one of a handful of cities in the whole United States, about fifteen or so, that has a full-time professionally accredited police and fire and Public Works divisions all at the same time. So we work very hard to meet the standards necessary to provide exceptional public service in many areas. And we're going to get parks too, aren't we? All right. Any other discussion? Please call her on.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
And if you give us just a minute, we'll do the Fire Department and then everybody will leave you, so. Municipal Order 2015-131.
Municipal order approving the promotions of Brian E. Chambers and Jay Matthew Ferguson to the position of Company Commander EMT, and Stephen P. Candela and C. Alan Disern, and Christopher D. Mitchell to the position of Fire Apparatus Operator EMT in the Fire Department.
So move.
Second. Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Mr. DeFebo.
Ask Brian O'Callahan to come up and put his recommendations before you. Good morning, evening.
Mayor, Commissioners, it's my pleasure to present this item to you. As you mentioned, we had several retirements through the Fire Department, including Chief Johnson. Chief Johnson and the retirements have opened the following promotions, and this will be a big part of Chief Johnson's legacy, as well as the following item. The following candidates for promotion completed the promotional testing procedure. They received positive evaluations. They were recommended for promotion by their supervisors. They were selected for promotion from Chief Johnson, and I'd like to also add my endorsement. I'd like to present Brian Chambers. Could you step forward, please? And Matt Ferguson. They are up for promotion for Company Commander EMT. Stephen Candela, Alan Disern, and Christopher Mitchell. They are up for Fire Apparatus Operator EMT. It's my pleasure again to endorse this promotion.
Congratulations. Joe?
You know, citizens in the city of Bowling Green need to realize, and I hope they do, many of them, that we have a Fire Department in our city, that if your house has a fire in it, or in the yard, wherever it may be, our people is going to be there within two to three minutes to put that fire out. Not very many other cities can say that. We are going to be there to put the fire out in two to three minutes. So these guys, they deserve our support. And I'm proud that I live here in Bowling Green and know many of these individuals personally. Thank you.
Thank you. I do want to congratulate the Fire Department also in receiving an ISO rating of two with the asterisk beside it. That's a great accomplishment. Very few departments have ever achieved that goal. For an ISO rating of ten, that's when you get your garden hose out and that's all you have, but two should have some effect on people's insurance premiums as well, so we congratulate you on that. Yes, ma'am.
Just another reason people need to live in the city of Bowling Green.
If you want to be annexed, we'll be happy to do it. It's only $200, $206 per hundred thousand dollar value home, so we'd be happy to take you in.
And we'll be there in a couple of minutes.
Any other comments or discussion? Please call her on.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
And Municipal Order 2015-132.
Municipal order approving the probationary appointments of Jay Keaton May, A. Chase McKee, and Jay Curtis Napier to the position of firefighter, and Sean D. Hamilton and Philip D. Wagner to the position of firefighter EMT in the Fire Department.
So move.
Second. Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Mr. DeFebo.
Just to tell you how difficult it is to become a firefighter in our community. In January of two fourteen, two hundred and forty-five people showed an interest in becoming a firefighter. A hundred and sixty-three actually showed up to take a test. A hundred and seven of that group passed. From that, forty-one proceeded to a polygraph and passing that. Fifteen did the, I'm sorry, forty-one did the physical fitness test and fifteen did the polygraph. From that, we developed a cadre of applicants to fill positions. We're seven short right now, and tonight, if you approve, we'll fill five of those. Mike is here if you have any question, as well as Chief O'Callahan.
And this is a point where we get to embarrass the new hires too, so Keaton May, you'll stand up for us. Next is Chase McKee, Curtis Napier, Sean Hamilton, and Philip Wagner. Congratulations to you guys. Any comments or questions?
Good-sized boys.
Big fellows. You're right. You're right. Please call her on.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Congratulations to all of you, and we'll give you just a few minutes, because I know everybody doesn't want to hear the rest of the meeting, so you guys can filter out if you like. Did you need me for something else?
Thank y'all.
Good job, Hawk.
Good job.
Yeah, it was perfect.
How you doing?
Ideal. Perfect. Perfect.
It's hot in there. It's raining.
Personal, but not long.
I had to crank down.
No high school, it was great.
Yeah.
DeFebo?
Melanie.
Could you not find a parking space?
I traveled around with the hot winds.
I kept looking for a ticket.
Melanie, parking ticket on you.
But you don't have a phone, do you? What's up with you?
My phone was out. There was no service.
AT&amp;T's out.
AT&amp;T's out. Kentucky and Tennessee.
I tried to call you, tried to call you, tried to call you, tried to call you. I'm going, "What's up with them? What's going on?"
It was fine. It was absolutely fine. Thank you for doing that. Ashley said that she could hear me louder and clearer than any other time last night, so I guess Chris is paying attention to me. All right, we'll go ahead and continue. I think these next items will be pretty routine. Municipal Order 2015-133. Chris? Testing? You got me on, Chris? Go ahead.
Municipal order approving the appointment of Elaine Smith Price to the City-County Board of Adjustments.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Paragon. This is for the Board of Adjustments, replacing Bill Price, who had to step aside to take care of some business matters. Any comments or questions? Please call her on.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2015-134.
Municipal order approving the appointment of Todd Davis to the Bowling Green Municipal Utilities Board.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Williams, second by Hill. This is for the Board of Adjustments, replacing Bill Price, who had to step aside to take care of some business matters. Any comments or questions? Please call her on.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2015-134.
Municipal order approving the appointment of Todd Davis to the Bowling Green Municipal Utilities Board.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Williams, second by Hill. This is a return to the Board for Todd Davis, who served a couple of terms earlier this decade, I guess is a better way to say it.
And I might say Todd was an outstanding chairman of that board, did a wonderful job. Glad to have him back.
Glad he's willing to participate in that again. Any other comments or discussion? Please call her on.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2015-135.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2015-51 for Cisco SmartNet Annual Renewal from J.B.K. Network Consulting LTD of Bowling Green, Kentucky, in the amount of $48,873.
So move.
Second. Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Mr. DeFebo.
Thank you, Mayor. The Cisco SmartNet capability provides a critical part of our IT infrastructure. To keep right order, we went out to bid. We had four responsive bidders. We're happy to say that the lowest bidder today we're recommending is J.B.K. of Bowling Green. Lynn is here if you have any questions, technical questions.
Any comments or questions? Please call her on.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes.
Municipal Order 2015-136.
Municipal order authorizing software subscription services from New World Systems in the amount of $104,754 for Fiscal Year 2016.
So move.
Second. Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Mr. DeFebo.
A number of years ago, I think around 2007, we changed our main workhorse software to what is known as New World. We've been pretty happy with that. It's been pretty effective. Most of our departments use that as the primary software. We're here today to approve the annual upgrade to that and maintenance renewal. It's a sole source, so we're asking you to approve the sole source for $104,754. Lynn is here if you have any questions about the warranty we have on this program.
Any comments or questions? Please call her on.
Hill?
Yes.
Paragon?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Municipal Order authorizing and accepting bid number 2015-53 for Parks and Recreation Camera Project from JBK Network Consulting LTD of Bowling Green, Kentucky, in the amount of $35,060 and 60 cents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams, Mr. DeFabo.
This is one of my pet projects. I've always been interested, since I've been here, to see if we could put technology, camera technology, in some of our main city parks, to not only protect the asset, but to protect our people who might be using it. So we're here tonight, it was in the budget, to install three new camera systems in Circus Square, Fox Square Park, and Mitch McConnell Park. We had two bidders. Again, the lower bidder was a city, was JBK of Bowling Green. Lynn is here if you need any technical explanation. But essentially, we'll have all three parks covered by cameras, which will be helpful for both the public and for us.
Comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2015-138.
Municipal Order authorizing and accepting bid number 2015-47 for fiscal year 2015 sidewalk construction from Scott &amp; Murphy Incorporated of Bowling Green, Kentucky, in the amount of $996,435 and 80 cents.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Paragon, Mr. DeFabo.
We always talk about our top three priorities being roads, stormwater, and the third is sidewalks and gutter. We're here tonight, hopefully, to approve a bid for almost a million dollars to install 9,500 linear feet of sidewalk, curb, and gutter to six prominent areas mentioned in Jeff's memo. We feel, as do you, that this is a great priority and a good use of public money. Jeff is here, does he have any questions? The six areas mentioned in Jeff's memo were highly vetted by you through various processes. But Jeff's here, if you have any questions.
Any comments or discussion? Please call the roll.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2015-139.
Municipal Order approving contracts through competitive purchase with various vendors under the Kentucky Pricing Contract for chemicals and fertilizers for the Parks and Recreation Department in an amount not to exceed $105,200.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams, Mr. DeFabo.
One of the little-known facts of city government that our parking rec people know, it takes an amazing amount of chemicals to keep our golf course in shape every year. We are here tonight to ask you to spend approximately $106,000 for a number of golf courses in public areas to provide the chemicals and fertilizers that we need, always attempting to save money and provide competition. Tony Whitmer, who was here and did the work on this, went and utilized the Master State Agreement, which had statewide competitions in here in the price, and we recommend your approval. And Tony's here if you have any questions.
Comments or discussion? Please call the roll.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2015-140.
Municipal Order authorizing and accepting bid number 2015-52 for V-Box salt spreaders from Municipal Equipment Incorporated of Louisville, Kentucky, in the amount of $31,000.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, and second by Denning, Mr. DeFabo.
It was nice to hear Mayor Wilkerson talk about the certification of three of our departments. We're always attempting, from a staff perspective, to be better. Based on our significant snow experience last year, we thought it was important to do a peer-to-peer review of our snow removal. We partnered with the city out of Colorado to come in and to examine how we do things, and they made some recommendations. Part of those recommendations is to provide more equipment to handle snow events. So we have the money, and we would like tonight to buy three V-Box spreaders from Municipal Equipment to help us achieve the goal of better snow removal. We had five bidder, and this one is the lowest. Jeff is here if you want to talk about the peer-to-peer review or about this bid.
That's just, it's inside the bed of another truck, right? Or have on.
Yes, there are inserts of large enough trucks. This would include two 10-foot units and a 14-foot unit.
I would, I'd like to commend the department for doing the review. I think that's a very smart thing to do, to talk to, you can always learn from somebody else.
We got some very good information from them, so we're glad we did it. And again, I think it's going to help us. Just another item on note, last month, we received all our salt into our 2,000-ton stockpile threshold that we're trying to keep. So it seems funny, it's 90 degrees outside, and we're talking about snow. So we're prepared.
Maybe it's wishful thinking, right?
If you don't want, why Mr. Lashley's here? I just want a commending that's kind of off, but on the Wakefield Pond, drove by there today. It looks amazing, and it was so nice to step out of the car and not smell. I mean, so you all have done a great job, so thank you to everyone.
You wanted to tell them the good news? You told them before the meeting?
Sure, be glad to. And I sent you a notice out a little earlier today. Part of the key in the success of this is establishing a dry well that takes a lot of water. And we had mentioned before, we might have to go to a Phase Two, is another means to completely drain the water down. Dry well did test very effective today, so we do not see a need in that unless something just crazy happens. It was great. So it was great news.
Nice job.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2015-141.
Municipal Order authorizing and accepting bid number 2015-49 for Lover's Lane Soccer Field Sinkhole Repair and Drainage Improvements from Carter Douglas Company, LLC, of Rossville, Kentucky, in the amount of $38,015.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Paragon, Mr. DeFabo.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Brent Belcher, our Parking Rec Director, noticed a sinkhole starting on Lover's Lane Soccer Complex. Since we tried to do collaboration between departments, he called Jeff Lashley, and Jeff thought it would be important to do an underground survey of the whole soccer field, because we don't want to lose kids in holes. True to form, we found that the problem was a little more significant, and we're here tonight to eliminate the problem by doing the underground remediation necessary, including piping of, installation of piping. Jeff can explain if you have any technical questions. We had four bidders, and the low bid is Carter Douglas. Again, something to be proud of, of our employees and our staff, who worked together to solve a problem before it happened, so.
We're pretty good at fixing sinkholes anymore.
Yeah.
It takes a minute. Thanks for turning that down for us. Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG 2015-21.
Ordinance rezoning real estate, ordinance rezoning a tract of land containing 0.18 acre from LI Light Industrial to RS-1D, single-family residential located at 928 Boat Landing Road, presently owned by Banks and Patricia Crandall.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Denning, second by Hill, Mr. DeFabo.
Mayor, item 14 or 15 are in the same family. I would ask that we consider them and have Steve come up if you have any questions about either item 14 or 15. They're both rezonings.
Any comments or questions for Mr. Hunter? For those of you watching in the audience, we have a large packet of information, and we've had an opportunity to review the minutes from the planning and zoning meetings as well. Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG 2015-22.
Ordinance rezoning real estate, ordinance rezoning a tract of land containing 0.2022 acre from RM4, multifamily residential, to GB, general business, located at 1320 Center Street, presently owned by Dean and Ann Dugan.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Paragon. Again, is there any questions for Mr. Hunter? Any discussion? Yes, sir, please come ahead. Steve Hunter, planning and zoning.
This is one, something small that wasn't in your packet, or what might have been in the minutes. The Donegan property is probably the last piece to develop there on Center Street. And basically, what they're doing is zoning this to build a commercial parking lot. It'll be a metered for-pay parking lot, just to take advantage of the development in the area. But we've had a challenge in that alley behind there, what we call the Greek Row Alley. Sigma News, Pike, Sigma Kies, Phi Deltas. As you guys know, there's been a lot of problems with the alley. Some of that's filtered back to you guys. This project gives us an opportunity to give a relief valve to that alley. So this just appeared kind of out of nowhere. We were working with the Brookside guys down on the corner, hoping we could get the alley punched through to 13th Street somehow, or to Center. This project came in, and this applicant had a whole different layout. But when we went to them and said, look, what we need to do is basically let this alley traffic filter through your parking lot, through interconnectivity, they were open to that, changed their layout to 90-degree parking. So basically, they'll have a commercial lot, their clients will come into the parking lot, probably from Center Street, but it'll allow that Greek Row traffic that's all kind of trapped in that alley to have a relief valve. And as you guys know, we get a lot of phone calls about the alley gets congested, the parking's not done well behind the Greek houses, and there are neighbors still on College Street that can't get out that alley, that's their sole way out. They'll be able to come through this parking lot and get to Center Street. So it solves a big problem, and we appreciate that applicant changing their development plan and allowing basically all this traffic to come through their parking lot. And then again, it's a simple, commercial parking lot for just the, you know, less than 30 spaces. So hopefully, that solves a big problem.
In between the fraternity house and the new Brookside commercial structure.
Right, right. It'll be a metered, solar-powered smart meter, where you can swipe your debit card, it'll send you text messages when your meter's about ready to expire, as well as to the enforcement agent that's going to patrol the lot. So pretty cool product that we haven't seen, and again, it's going to solve a big problem. But there's a spin-off piece of this. When we go to the University District in a few weeks, we're going to request some of the Greek houses remove some of that parking, in lieu of now that we have a way to get through the alley, and possibly go to parallel parking with us maybe looking at trying to build a greenways trail down the backside of those houses. So we really appreciate what these applicants, it just appeared. I mean, we were told it would never develop and never sell, and then they came in the office and said, hey, we want to build a parking lot. And they were open to basically pushing all that traffic through their private parking lot, so just want to point that out.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2015-143.
142.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Municipal Order authorizing agreements between the city of Bowling Green and each of the five approved subrecipients for Year 12 Community Development Block Grant CDBG Program Funding.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams, Mr. DeFabo.
As being an entitlement community for community block grants, we're required by HUD to discuss our plans with the public through a five-year planning process, as well as yearly planning process. We're in Year 12. We've got approval to spend their money. We are, with your permission, hopefully, going to spend our block grant money for five different projects, from the welfare centers for assistance in their programming, to the Human Rights Commission for fair housing outreach, the Housing Authority for Small Business Development, Big Brother, Big Sister, and finally, Hope Harbor for mentoring program.
Hope Harbor.
Nick Cook is here, he manages this program along with Brent, if you have any questions.
Any comments or questions? Dispersion? Please call the roll.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2015-143.
Municipal Order authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into grant agreements for select neighborhood action programs, SNAP grants, with various neighborhoods.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Paragon, Mr. DeFabo.
Bowling Green is a community of great neighborhoods. To reflect that idea, we changed a number of years ago, one of our departments from Housing and Community Development for Neighborhoods and Community Services. As mentioned in that name, we believe that we should provide services via the structure of neighborhoods. We think it's efficient, we think it reflects who we are as a community. One of the pearls of that neighborhood approach is our SNAP grant program, which we've had for a number of years. We've believed in it for many years. This year, we were able to put a little more money, from 25 to up to $40,000, to allow us to do more projects with people. It's probably the first time, Karen tells me, that we've had all of our five categories, neighborhood beautification, neighborhood organizing, capital to purchase, neighborhoods and schools celebrating partnerships, and professional services, all reflected in this year's funding. Karen Foley's here, along with Brent, if you have any questions.
Yes, ma'am. I just want to appreciate or recognize those homeowners associations have taken the time to work on making their community look so much better, and the fact that they have taken an interest in doing it themselves, and getting this matching money to help in the community. I think we have representatives from the Crestmore subdivision here tonight, and thank you for sitting through the entire meeting to get to this point, so.
Their interest way at Crestmore really looks nice.
Oh, yes, it is. It looks great.
Very well done.
And I think you're looking at, if I'm Crestmore, I think you're looking at some more signposts as well as the landscaping, is that correct? It takes neighbors who are interested in the community to make a real neighborhood, so thank you very much for your participation in that.
Any other comments or questions? Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. I noticed one of the neighborhoods, Karen, wanted to put shrubbery in instead of curbing. Who will dictate what type of shrubbery can be put in? Will they be told what kind?
Public Works does a review of each of those kinds of projects, and so that's one of the things that, I know Mark Abshire is looking at the location, and we'll want to make sure that going forward, whatever's put in there is something that can be easily maintained, because we don't want, you know, a few years down the road for it to then be site obstruction or something like that. So that's something that we'll evaluate with them.
Who will maintain those shrubs?
It would be the responsibility of either the neighbors together to maintain those, or the individual properties that front those locations to take care of them.
But someone will tell them what they can or cannot put in?
Yes.
Good. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Thank you again. Municipal Order 2015-144.
Municipal Order authorizing the mayor to execute a lease agreement with Bowling Green International Festival Incorporated to lease Circus Square Park and designated streets for September 25th and 26th, 2015, and further waiving the normal rental fees for the rental of Circus Square Park for this event.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Paragon.
As the commission members, and I don't know if all the public knows, that about more than 10% of our people who call Bowling Green home were not born in the United States, what they call Bowling Green Home. To celebrate that, we have an annual international festival, which is probably one of our most successful festivals. As part of the buy-in from the city, they've asked us to waive the normal rental fees. We've done this for the last couple of years, latest heavily involved in this, and we recommend your, again, to do this this year.
The city doesn't fund the festival, but we allow them to use the park at no charge, and that's what this is, municipal. Any other comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. Municipal Order 2015-145.
Municipal Order authorizing payment to the Warren County Property Evaluation Administrator for fiscal year 2016.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Denning, second by Hill, Mr. DeFabo.
How much we pay in property tax is based, in many respects, on how much judgment is made about the value. That's done in this area by Warren County Property Value Administrator, PVA. We pay them $50,000. That's a year for all of our residents to give us a value to assess a property tax. This has been the same amount for a long time.
statutory limit, isn't it?
So we recommend your approval. It's a good deal for the city, and it's a good deal for the citizens.
And if you don't mind me giving a shout-out to Property Evaluation Administrator, Bob Branstad, or that's an unsung position, and he does it very well. His staff is very professional, and thank him for taking care of us. Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG 2015-23.
Ordinance amending Code of Ordinances. Ordinance amending Chapter 25 Code of Ethics of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordinances to amend Subchapter 25-11 related to nepotism as recommended by the Board of Ethics.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. Mr. Fable.
The commission will remember, we were recently acknowledged as being ethical community by KLC. As one of the flagship communities in the state of Kentucky, it's important for us to keep our ordinance up to date and have proper wordage in it. We've recently made a change in a word, and I would ask Mike Grubbs to come up and tell you what that change was and why we did it.
Mr. Grubbs, Human Resources.
This is an entire ordinance to change one word in the Ethics Code. I recently asked to speak to the Ethics Board to get an interpretation on the nepotism policy defining hiring of a relative, and I've been asked to put that request in writing, which I've done, so that I can get a written response. But while they were reviewing the policy, the term respective, in terms of respective supervisor, came up. Board members, staff really couldn't give a great definition of respective, so the board decided that they prefer us to use the word immediate in saying that someone can't hire an immediate, a relative, and supervise them as being their immediate supervisor. So the change here is to change the word respective to immediate, where someone can't be hired in the same department where their relative is going to be their immediate supervisor.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Hill.
Yes.
Paragon.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Denning.
Yes.
Wilkerson.
Yes. It's the last item on the agenda. I want to thank Mrs. Ward for getting the city commission chambers ready for us to go tonight. We were rushing around this week trying to do some finishing touches. We have some more electronic improvements to make.
I want to thank the staff for making the interim adjustment for the camera, and that was an average task, so everybody worked together to make this happen tonight.
What we've done in here is we've repainted, re-carpeted, new shades.
New chairs.
And new chairs. Which are what color, did you say?
They look purple to me.
Technically brown, but yeah.
They're brown?
They're brown.
They're brown?
It's a good thing I'm colorblind. I'm not going to get in that fight, so. All right, that's the last item on the agenda. We'll have our next scheduled meeting on Tuesday, August 15th, 2015. Thank you for tuning in.